The special. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Library Board of Trustees, City of Palm Springs. The date is the 29th of September and the time is 5:34. So, Jeannie, could you please do roll call?
Should we call you Chair and Vice Chair now?
I guess so.
Okay, Chair McBride?
Here.
Vice Chair Borba?
Here.
Treasurer Jones?
Here.
Trustee Norgard?
Here.
And trustee Garner is not here yet.
Thank you. Can you please share with us the posting of the agenda?
The agenda was posted as requirements at City Hall on or before. On or before September 20th.
It is now customary in our agenda at this point to open up the mic for any public comments. It's so nice to see a bunch of familiar faces out there I haven't seen in a while. So, thank you for joining us today. Anyone have any comments or anything you'd like to say before we get started? All right, thank you. So, this is a special meeting that, in my opinion, we've been waiting for for quite some time. And the Board of Trustees at our last meeting asked me to pull this meeting together because the Jeannie has been asked by the City Council and the City Department's heads to pull together a priority. I have asked her to share with us what she's been asked to do in the process. But it, of course, when Jeannie sets priorities, it cascades down through all the organizations that support her mission and goal. And we all felt it was really important for all of us to come together and talk about it and have the friends and the foundation as well help establish priorities that would support Jeannie, just like the Board of Trustees did. And to kind of clarify if there's any uncertainty or if something's unclear about who does what. And to emerge from this meeting having a much better understanding on what lies ahead for the library in the coming months and years. So I'm very encouraged that the city has asked us to do this process. So I'm glad that we're all here. And the Board of Trustees, because this, we are here, we are our quorum, it is a public meeting, which means members of the public are invited to speak. It also means that we have to follow the, just the rules and process that we always follow when we have an open public meeting. So because it's a small group, what I'd like to do is have us kind of go through the majority of our meeting, and then we can open it up, of course, for comments from members of the public and our guests that are here, if that's okay. So with that, Jeannie, why don't I turn it over to you? And why don't you give us the background as to why we're here?
Yes. So, the City Council is planning a strategic visioning session, strategic planning session in November. The dates so far have been tentatively set for November 19th and 20th. It's a Friday and Saturday. This will be a public meeting. You're welcome to attend. Give public comment if you feel the need. Observe the meeting, but it is a public meeting, and this is a time when the City Council comes together and sets their goals for the next year, maybe two years, because there are so many priorities in the city. They have to, if you, if you don't have any, if everything's a priority, then nothing's a priority. So you have to, you have to set priorities. And so as a city, we have to decide what are the most urgent items to take on. And so they've asked all of the departments and all of the commissions to create their priorities and funnel that information to them before the November meetings so that they have a chance to review that and and have a chance to think about it and be thoughtful about the process. So the library, as a department of the city, we create our department priorities. And then the Library Board of Trustees created a commission priority list. And then, like Ed was saying, this is a great opportunity for us to align our priorities as organizations and groups. So then it would be, it's great that the Friends have thought about their priorities, the Foundation thought about their priorities. So do you want, I could share my screen and show what the library priorities are, or I have the packet, and the packet is available online on our PalmSpringsLibrary.org website. You can go there, you can go to the City of Palm Springs and link through to the Boards and Commissions page and find our packet if you want to go back and look at it later.
Jeannie, just for background, all departments are using the same form, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So we're all using the same template. And so that's a nice thing. And they told us, I know there are lines, there's lines for three items. They told us to do two items. We're a maximum of two. So I worry, we set a goal of increase, and this is for the 2021-2022 year, the current fiscal year that we are in now. We decided that our number one priority would be to increase library card users. And that's a strategic thought for us because there are things that we want to do to increase library card users, like reach out to schools, children, new employees at the city, whatnot. And just by building library card holders, you build library card use. And, you know, it just, it all, it all falls back into the library card holders.
Could I ask just a real quick question? I just want to be sure. When you talk about increasing the library card users and the rest, I'm assuming you're talking about not only physically but virtually in terms of their usage?
Oh, definitely. Yeah, just the number of people who have a card, because you have to have a card to access our online. So, yeah.
I just wanted to be sure that the virtual time of, I mean, you know, going in and reading the New York Times or something virtually. I mean, want to be sure all of those types of contacts count.
Absolutely. And that's why the library card itself is the foundation of everything that we do that, you know, requires a card. And but, and they create spaces in the current library facility to meet community needs. And we did talk about this last month. So, you know, I don't want to go into too much detail, but we spaces. Next year, our goal is to review and update every policies with a focus on diversity, equity, inclusion. And then to create a vision and design for the new library, because we think at that point, that's where we'll be, that it won't happen this year, but next year, as far as the actual design, we're hoping it'll be next year. And then our critical factors, we need small meeting spaces, we want to examine our policies, and we need Chiara to help us move this library across that finish line.
So, Jeannie, before you go to the next screen, can I ask you a question about this?
Yes. Yes.
Do you, do you mind elaborating on 2022, number two? Creating the vision and design. I know that, you know, you're, you're kind of limited to what you can say there, but maybe expand a little bit on what does that mean to you and the staff?
So what that means, based on what we were, what was presented to City Council almost six months ago about capital improvement, a five-year capital improvement project plan, the first thing that they talked about was the JC building. And that's where we're talking about in our, this year. JC Frye was listed in before the main library renovation. And then in the five-year plan, the library comes along in about year two and three, the main library. So I know that it's on the city's radar. And so that's why I didn't even bother to put it on this current year, because this current year is already three months gone. And, and I just know that that's going to be something for next year. What that entails is that we had our building plan, they, everybody said they want to keep the library here at the site. Notice I put the asterisk next to the word new, because we still haven't decided if a new library needs new construction in the, in the grassy area next door, or if it's just an addition, or if it's just a renovation of this footprint with no expansion. We haven't made that determination yet. So it could be anything. But that's, did that answer your question?
Kind of. So let me do a follow-up question as well. So, you know, before COVID, I mean, literally, the day before we all shut down for COVID, we were about to have Measure J sign off on the five-year plan, which included money right, you know, right then to help with the project of at least planning for renovation and potentially giving us a little bit of money for the Frye Building. Now we're here, we're talking today. So can you give us an update as to where, where are you as a city department in that process?
We are really where we left off. And luckily for us, I'm seeing in the City Council packets and the City Council meeting tomorrow night, their financial report, they're, they're putting more money back into the budget for Measure J. They're putting more, they're seeing more revenue than they expected. So this is good news. And I think that this City Council visioning plan, visioning process is going to be the next step of getting this to go again. You know, it's all halted. Like you said, everything halted because of COVID. They took all the budget away. They stopped even planning anything. And canceled programs that were already approved. So this is a way to get us back into that queue, if you will.
So there's been, and I see David, you got your hand up, so I'm going to come to you in a second. The, so you haven't had any instructions so far as to, because you remember, for those of you on trustees and for Nancy and David, I attended the last Measure J meeting back, or the one I attended was back in April. And so they're, they are organizing, they're getting ready to work on their five-year plan. And the library, of course, is all over that plan, which is great news. We seem to have regained our place in the priorities, which was also great news. But Jeannie, are you getting any instruction from anyone about, are we, because when I was there, of course, they even said to me, they tried to get, pull me into the meeting and said, oh, what's the library want to do? And of course, I wasn't on the agenda. I didn't say anything. But are you being asked, or are we, are you being probed for like this planned? Or do you think this is going to trigger that?
As a department of the city, I was, I was given instruction that I don't need to present to Measure J. Those are more for community projects and things that are not city department projects. My, my process goes through the city manager, the Public Works Department. But that I don't, I don't, that my requests wouldn't go that direction. The, the input that, this is what I was told, the input that they are looking for are for community suggest decks. That if you saw something out in your community, like you needed a sidewalk for your street, and you know, that maybe that would be something that you would suggest. For me, I just tell the city manager and the engineering department, you know, this is where I am. And luckily, I mean, they already know because we're already on the list. As what's going, what's being requested. So I
And so tonight, hopefully, we all come together and you have a stronger document that shows your community's support and what your community agrees are your priorities, and that will feed into that process as well.
Yeah, now if you saw something that was really like a special small project, or I'm not sure even what it could be. I mean, we talked about the JC Frye Building. I think that's a great project. I have my, the storage room conversion to make that in a small classroom. That would be a great little small project that maybe Measure J would want to take on this year. You know, if they're looking for smaller projects, that's probably $100,000 project.
I'd like to recognize David, trustee Norgard, you have a comment or question?
As thanks, Ed. I wanted to go back to the first priority for a moment, Jeannie. Sorry, I'm taking us backward here for just a second. I wanted to ask about what your goals were in terms of the increase of number of cardholders and increase of usage. Do you have a numerical goal in mind for this current fiscal year?
I don't. I don't have a specific goal, but I have some specific targets in mind. We are thinking about really trying to reach out to the schools and and even a small increase is a good increase. We're thinking, we're like, let's, let's see what we can handle. Let's see what the schools are willing to participate with. If we wanted to reach out to one classroom to start, you know, and then scale this project up where we try to get library card. There's a program that the Ontario Library does called Kindergo, and every kindergartner gets a library card. It's a wonderful program. And, and so, I mean, that's the sort of thing that we could start out with, you know. I want to get my children's librarian, my teen librarian active in, in reaching out to them. COVID has been such a factor with us. We can't, we we didn't do back-to-school nights, we didn't do our family fun fest, we didn't do anything that we normally do to bring people in. And so anything, any increase, and don't, I, I meant to look up and Lisa run a report. I meant to look up how many active library card users we have. It's about 16,000. Or I could be wrong. Lisa might be able to run the report real quick and tell me, because she has access to the, to the system. But I wanted to see how many library card holders we have. And like I said, any increase is good. We just did a thing, and we just worked with our HR department to build in a library card application into hiring paperwork. And then during our open enrollment that starts in October, every employee is going to get access to have, fill out the form and get a library card. So we've already sent, I know, three person libraries that we've sent over to other departments to try to, to build awareness within our own city employees.
Thank you. Just one comment, and I'll return the floor to Ed here. It occurs to me that this sort of effort could be enhanced by working with local nonprofits, faith-based organizations, other secular organizations and the like. And if we move on to fundraising for a new library, it will really have served two purposes. It will serve the purpose of increasing library use and increasing the visibility and awareness of the library itself. And that in turn can cultivate potential donors down the road. So I'm very interested in the first priority, as you've stated it here. And I would just suggest that there may be, in addition to the strategy about city employees and public school students, that there may be the nonprofit route as well to explore.
Yeah, we, we are totally on board with that. We, we were talking about the LGBT Center. Yeah, I, I, yes. It's such a simplified goal. It looks basic, but there are so many great things that we can do with that. And you're absolutely, you've said it exactly, you said what I should have said, but yes, we could scale this. This is scalable and it builds awareness about the great stuff. We have so many great things already. We just want people to know about them.
Okay, thank, thank you so much.
You want to go ahead and finish?
Basically, the rest of the stuff is that we are working with our critical factors are that we need funding source for the small meeting space and the JC Frye renovation. We need to create a focus group to examine our policies and provide feedback. That's in the next year. Need champions to move the library across the finish line. And then any improvements, we want to work with human resources, like you said, to issue a new library card to every new employee at their onboarding. Work directly with school or community organizations to create a student library card program. And Boys and Girls Club, too. We were talking about Boys and Girls Club, Parks and Rec Camp Kids. Yeah, the opportunities are endless with that. And create library-specific talking points for council's use at the district level so that they can be our advocates, too.
So Nancy and David, the trustees, of course, had an opportunity at our last meeting to go over this with Jeannie. And as you'll see in the next few slides, we've had our input. You're invited here to participate representing each of your organizations. So I want to make sure that, I know you've had some time to look at the documents as well. Do you guys have any questions or concerns or comments about what Jeannie has established for the library?
I don't. I think it's pretty clear.
I have a question about the champions to move the library across the finish line. Can you, can you expand on that, please?
Well, you're all my champions. Every one of you advocates, you know, you're my three organizations, the trustees, the Friends, the Foundation, the City Council, community members, library cardholders, anybody to, if we can all get on board with this, if the city lists the library as a priority, I think then we've got the champions. I know the people are out there. Everybody's so eager to, to help this library. I'm very happy to be in such a supportive community.
Yeah. Jeannie, if I'm assuming you're going to be successful in these endeavors, but one of the first ones with the JC Frye Building, if we're able to acquire the funding to renovate that space, are you going to be able to staff it with existing staffing? Are we now looking at also additional staffing costs?
My plan wasn't to have any extra staff. My, my plan wasn't specifically to do too much library things in there for the public to come in unless there was a specific event or something like the Friends. The space is perfect for the Friends of the Library to have their book sale. That's volunteer-based. There's, there's sorting area. If we put our archive over there, that's off limits. You know, so that's volunteer-based, too. And then if we did have a staff member that was working with a customer, they would either go get, go retrieve the stuff and bring it back, or our goal is to have all of our content digitized. So we might not have to actually go into the archive. It would just be accessing it online. So if we did have anything else that was over there, it would have, I don't, I don't really see it too much being utilized in that way. Now, if it, the other thought behind fixing up this building is that if we do get approval to renovate this library, we need a home for a temporary library. And this would be a perfect little temporary location for us to run our library out of. And while we gave this renovated, and, and that would be a great catalyst. And at the end, there's a beautiful completed building that's really adorable, and the Friends can use it, and, and we can use it for our archive and whatnot.
Thank you.
Exactly. But mostly for the Friends to use, I think, and for us to use our, for archival purposes.
Any other questions from the, from the group? Okay, let's, let's move along. All right, let's, can we keep?
Can I add one more thing about that? If we do, if we do archive, then that frees up another space in the main library for us to use for the public. So right now, I'm working on the other room, the other storage room. But it's, it's not a giant room. And I know that there's more use. If, if, I know that there's a need for community spaces. So then what it would do is push all that, that content to that side of the parking lot and then free up space here for us to use in this main building where our staff works so that they don't, yeah, we're going to have staffing at both places. So.
Thank you. Right, so let's, let's move to the, to the next document. So for those of you, David, Nancy, and our guest, when, for the last, I would say, six months, maybe even a year, the Library Board of Trustees has spent a lot of time in looking at the trust fund. And in particular, how the trust fund is invested and how it's producing revenue and funds for future generations and for projects that we want to do right now. Our former treasurer, who, who turned out kind of walked us through what it looks like to look at such investments and to get organized around how we might improve the returns that we've been getting. Just a real quick history, our trust fund dollars are integrated into the City of Palm Springs' larger pool of money from other departments and other agencies. And is invested as a single pot of money. Our trust fund is tracked separately, of course, and at the end of each quarter or even the year, we receive, or monthly, we receive interest payments that come into our account. And we watch that every month. We talk about it. We spend a lot of time looking at the performance. And to be honest, the performance hasn't been nearly what it should be if you look at what other funds are doing out there with our economy right now. So where we are right now is, before we jump into this, is that we have two new board members. And I'm so sorry, I should have introduced everyone before we got started here, but Al Jones is our new treasurer. And David Norgard is our new trustee, one of our new trustees. And we're, we're, we're beginning to identify what our options are. We had a meeting probably now about four months ago with the city manager, the city attorney, and with the city finance director. And the, and the topic of that meeting was, we had had an impression, true or false or whatever, that maybe the trust fund was to always stay with the city, that nothing could be touched. You know, what, what were the responsibilities of the trustees? And so we had this meeting, and we decided we finally wanted to know once and for all, what can we do? And at that meeting, we learned that as trustees of the, the trust itself, we may move that money to other places to make investments to, we can certainly keep it at the city. But the city manager and the folks at that meeting agreed that we should probably investigate where we might want to invest those funds and so that we can make more. And so we're kind of at that point where we're just beginning to think about what that looks like. It's important because, you know, the, the intent of that fund has always been to benefit the library, and we want it to grow so that there's long-term money for any program that we as citizens in support of library want, want to see, and anything that the staff wants to see, more importantly, the city wants to see from the library. So with, with that, the Library Board of Trustees established, and Jeannie, can you pull our format? You're on mute, sorry. You're throwing your hands up.
Her computer is frozen, so she can't do anything.
Oh, no. Oh, no. I don't suppose I can share my screen, can I?
Not unless she's given you permission.
Yeah. Well, you, there was a packet, and I'm sorry for our guest, if you didn't see the packet. So let me, let me talk through what we built as part of our priorities. Based on what Jeannie shared with us and what you just saw from Jeannie, the Library Board of Trustees is our first priority for the 21-22 ongoing priorities. Areas of focus, number one is establish investment strategies to grow the trust fund. So that I just shared with you, that is a top priority for us, and it has been for several months now. Because we want to see it increase so that we have more money available to spend. Our second priority was to secure funding to create spaces in the current library facility to meet community needs. I think everybody on this call knows that we've been I think everybody on this call knows that we've been through a process for a long time now, trying to identify what we want to do with the facility. And the trustees feel that we, we waited long enough. If there's anything that we can do short term, as Jeannie has shared with, she would love to have some additional meeting rooms, then we're behind that. And you know, how can we support her and trying to secure more meeting space or more facilities? In the current building prior to whatever might happen in the next phase. So that's, that's our second priority. And then for next year, we continue to to secure funding for the library facilities through partnerships. The trustees feel very strongly, our partners are the friends and the foundation and the city. And we work really hard to get all those bodies together to see what we can do. And to create goals for either fundraising or advocacy, whatever that might look like, to help us achieve the goals. And more importantly, right now, it's working with the, the funding sources to identify how we can plan ahead. For those funding sources. For example, Measure J has a five year plan. You know, what does that mean to our long term planning? What can we do, you know, within the next year versus late five years if the need is really there? So that's listed actually is the partnerships with the city Palm Springs Public Library Foundation and the Friends. And of course, it, it's, we are very clear that we don't know what new might be. You know, new could be a brand new building, it could be a renovated building. We're not really getting caught up in that at this point. It's more of identifying for the community where we need to go, what we need to do for the facility, for the community. And that brings us to the next one, which is really important. And I think that's why all of us are here is the library community. Or I'm sorry, leverage community support and awareness for new library facilities. The time will come, we've had, we've been through this so many times and I've, I've heard it loud and clear from lots of supporters. Is that we, we've gotten to the precipice where we're ready to, we're all, I think, in our minds, ready to take that shovel and turn it over in the ground. You know, and get something started and something happens. I, I mean, I can tell you guys, the day that we literally were waiting for the signature and we were shut down. Was just a heart sink for a lot of us. But you know, we, we got to keep going and we've got to keep everybody excited about what the future holds. And so it is talking about it. It's, it's talking to our constituents, talking to our community. And then the time will come where, when we have that vision and we have that plan, it's really getting out there and explaining it. More importantly, it's getting all the input on what we should do. So we have as our second priority is working with the community and keeping them energized. And listening to their input about what we want to do next. That's the end of our form. I, I'd like to see period, any of the other trustees would like to add to anything that I just shared with the group. So with that, at our last meeting, we, we said, okay, we, we've got to pull in the friends and the foundation now. And, you know, and make sure that we, we've heard their concerns or their questions. But more importantly, establish this partnership. And I know that the groups have been talking about this for quite some time and asking for clarification as to what each of us are going to have to do. To to move these projects ahead. So with that, my intention tonight was not to sit here necessarily and complete a form for the friends of the foundation. It really was more to bring everybody up to speed on where we are with this process. And to more importantly, start at, see if you have any questions. But ultimately, as Jeannie shared with us in the opening, we would like to have you guys complete one of these forms for each of your organizations. So that we can then fold it into Jeannie's forms and to her process and submit to city council. Jeannie, is there a, you just went away, is there a deadline that you think that you've got to set before we have all of these forms pulled together?
Ed, can I, I, I know I can't speak for Jeannie, but she asked me for that form and I turned one in for the foundation. And has, has the priorities as they relate to the library. You know, obviously the foundation has its own priorities, but the ones I put on this form were, you know, obviously in support of the library.
Thank you. Nancy, I think you were working on yours too, right?
My form was turned in earlier today as well.
Wonderful. So do you guys feel that you're okay with talking about each of your forms and what you submitted at this point? Do you think you can talk about that to us and share with us since we haven't seen them?
Sure.
Okay, who wants to go first? You want to go first, Nancy?
Fine with me.
All right.
Okay, so the primary purpose of the friends is to provide support for the library. Not only through monetary contributions, but also through volunteerism. And so that's our primary thing. Our significant recent accomplishments is that over the last several years. We always are able to provide whatever volunteers that are needed for the library. Whether it's for summer reading or any types of programs, Christmas, whatever, we always get volunteers to be there. We've also have contributed over a hundred thousand each year for the last several years to buy whatever they need. It could be for summer reading program, which usually runs around twenty thousand. We do the books. Shoot, now I can't think of the name of the books that or that. Hot off the press, that's it. We, we also supply the hot off the press. We do, you know, if they need something like a sound system, they need some computers, whatever they need on their day to day. That the city doesn't cover, we try to be there to support them. Our priorities, well, they asked for twenty one, twenty two. And I did list them, but they're not just for twenty one, twenty two. These are for ongoing, some of them for this year as well as next year. So our number one priority is to continue to support the library in their day to day function, being both through volunteers and through monetary. And how to measure our success, we're saying that we're going to raise over a hundred thousand in twenty twenty two. To keep funds going into the library. Our second one is to increase our membership. This is a challenging thing. Our membership is getting older. And it's dwindling. Right now, several of our active members have not renewed. So we just sent, we just sent out letters this week to everyone who is a lapse member. And then we're going to give them a week or so to respond. Once that passes that they still hasn't, haven't responded, we're actually going to do individual phone calls to each one. To tell them how much we need them and try to get them to re-up the membership. And then, of course, we need to go out and find new members. And I'm sure somebody's going to ask me how, but we'll get to that. My next priority for the next year is the Frye Building. You know, while this would be a great resource for the friends, we also know it'd be a great resource for the library. Different uses like Jeannie already discussed, how they could put the archives and different things there. And the friends would love to have a bookstore. We're willing to chip in monetarily to get this done. We were hoping perhaps we could partner with the foundation. That I think this would be a great joint project for us. And, you know, with the city and trustees can also, along with Measure J, do this. We'd like to get this done. A measure of success on that is to actually get this started. Because the, the friends have sold more books off the bookshelves and through our e-sales. This year during COVID than we have in the other past summers. It's just amazing what we've been able to do. And we know if we had a bookstore and we had regular hours, we have for book sales, we'd have regular hours for book donations. We know we could just do so much more. And then our other goal is financial, kind of like what you guys were discussing. And I'd love to talk to Vice Chair Borba, who I know has been involved in this. And I don't know Al Jones, but maybe he has input as well. But I'd also like to get some input on what you're all thinking of doing with your money. Because we have money that, the friends are very conservative. And we have always basically kept our money in CDs. And when the CDs were paying, you know, three, four, five plus percent, that's one thing. But today, as you know, CDs are doing that and we've never really gotten involved in investments. Because again, we are very conservative, but for some of us, others more. But we'd like to see what you're doing because we need to see how we can increase our revenue. And that's basically it.
I, I love get moving. I love that.
Yep, that's it. I, I like action.
I can get behind that. I'm telling you right now, I think that's, I love that. Let's get moving on this. I agree. Thank you, Nancy. Are there any questions for Nancy from the rest of the, either the trustees or David that you'd like to ask Nancy? Trustee Norgard?
Thanks. I do have one question. I'm curious as to how many members the friends have currently.
Well, we have over four hundred. But some of those are now lapsed and we're going back probably a third to maybe third. Somewhere between thirty five and forty percent of those are now lapsed at the current time. But I think with a nudge, we can get several of these back. But our immediate goal is to get over five hundred.
I see. Okay, thank you.
And then we're going to set a goal for next year, whether it's, you know, we want to do something realistic. So whether we're going to have a meeting and discuss how many we should go after. But whether it's a reasonable goal of ten or fifteen a month, new members. But then we have to get a plan in place to actually make this happen. Because it's not going to happen just not doing anything, obviously.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Nancy, my question is, I see members of your board here and I, as I've said, I'm so glad to see them here. So you've discussed this with your board and you guys feel that this, this, this is your priorities. This is a document you're ready to get behind and submit to city council.
Well, I asked everybody for input and these seem to be our primary goals. And increasing our membership has been an ongoing thing, but that's something that we're really focusing on right now. Because we need more members. There are a lot of people who use the library, who are very low income and they really can't afford to join the friends. But that's why we have to get more people involved. And, you know, as Jeannie gets more people with cards, library cards. That also gives us more opportunity to present the friends. We have a lot of things coming up. You know, we really want to get Palm Springs Speaks again going. And then once COVID, you know, gets, you know, more in the, where, where, and we're more comfortable having big groups. Something we really want to get Palm Springs Speaks going again, which gives us a great opportunity to get people's emails and get them involved. In joining the friends and it's a great way also to promote Palm Springs. We have Modernism coming up in February. Hopefully COVID won't put a crink into that. And we have a Great House tour and library lecture that's going to be, we're also doing a silent auction. I believe it's November eleventh through November fourteenth. So hopefully we'll get some publicity out about that. All of you can, you know, bid on our auction items. We also have, we're just coming out with, I don't know if any of you have seen on our website. But we also support the Koi Pond. So we have this new, we have new T-shirts and aprons and totes that are really cute. They show the koi fish and the books and we have those for sale, they're going on for sale, I think tomorrow or Friday at the library. So we have a lot of things in the works. We're very enthusiastic for it. We have some people that are just, you know, so passionate and so involved in doing things. And then we have a great volunteer. People that want to volunteer and they're just, you know, anxious for things to get back to normal so that we can have. They can volunteer to help like with summer reading and different things. And another thing, the book clubs could also be at the Frye Building. There are just so many other uses and things that we can do to promote the library. It's just like I said, we got to get moving on this.
Thank you, Jay, for being in Urbana. I love that. That was awesome. Those are beautiful T-shirts. I love them. Any other question? Nancy, I, I thank you. That's great. And, you know, I, I know that your organization, our organization of the friends will get behind anything like this. And, and so thank you for getting their input and, and thank all of them for the work they put into it.
Oh, we have the best board.
Absolutely. I agree with you. You're all good people.
Ed, Ed, I'm back. Oh, I'm echoing. Let me shut the door. But I moved. So my computer, just so you guys know, I hope, I hope the video works out okay. It's recording and my whole screen went white and I had no controls. And so I'm, I'm a little nervous about the recording and getting that thing to actually stop recording at the end of the meeting. But luckily I made Lisa's a co-host, so I could jump in here. Lisa did run the report and library cardholders, we have twenty three thousand two hundred and ninety six. Library cardholders, more than I thought. So that's.
Their group.
A great starting point.
Absolutely.
Anything we can do is, is better. So hopefully you could still, you could see the screen, right? The screen sharing.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing it. Okay, so if there's no other questions for Nancy, let's move on to Mr. Sidley. Talk about the, the foundation. Do you have his form too? So David, you want to, you want to walk us through your form?
Yeah. So as it relates to the library, our number one priority is to provide funds for the new library. And I think most everybody knows that the foundation was formed about five years ago. To provide significant funding for a new building. And when I say new building, I think we all know that, you know, that's going to be whatever form it takes. Whether it is an actual new building or refurbishing the current building. So that's really our number one priority. And. So that, so the rest knows that, you know, the foundation exists to provide significant funding for a new library in whatever form that eventually takes. And once the city and the library know what direction they're headed, the foundation's role will become much more clear. And our success obviously will be, you know, the, the new building. And then our, our number two priority, just in general, is to provide a long term endowment for the library. To raise money and be the custodian of those funds. Just so that there's a, you know, a big cushion for the library to fall back on should we face another pandemic or financial crisis in the future. And then for twenty twenty two, you know, it's clear we're all kind of on board for the J C Frye Building. And I think that, you know, it, it's a great first project for the foundation. And, you know, the board and I are, are very excited and behind this a hundred percent to, to. For this to be our first big project. And I hope everybody can see that the difference between what the friends are doing and what we're doing is quite clear. And, you know, we're going to provide significant funding for this project. And. You know, we're, we're just really excited to partner with the friends and the library and the city to, to make this happen. And then our second priority is to continue to build our internal board and to continue to refine the organization. So that we're ready to hit the ground running when we know exactly what direction the city's going with the new building. And just so, you know, we all understand. You know, we think that the eventual goal will be a number of millions of dollars, if it's five million or ten million or twenty. And we need to have the organization strong and a, and a big infrastructure to be able to do that. To be able to, to go out and meet the people that with the big money, to be able to have events to attract that kind of money. To be able to do naming rights for the new library so that we can have, you know, conference rooms and facilities. That named after big donors. And there's a lot of work behind the scenes that we're doing and that we have been doing with our. With our consultants to, to build our board and to be a really solid organization that, that can really do some big fundraising. In the future.
Thank you, David. Are there any questions from the trustees or Nancy for David and the foundation?
Sounds great.
So I, I think that I, I'm so glad to see the, the foundation document as well. I think that it's, it's this, if someone picks up all these documents, clearly we all have one common theme is that we want something now. And we'd like to see some facilities now. And I think that's great. We're prepared. But we're also focusing on long term. What, what is our library going to look like in future years? And I think that when the city gets this, then it's, it's clear to them that we're all about partnering with the city and, and the resources that they can provide, which I think is a great formula. And I do believe, and I've always believed from everyone I've talked with at the city, that the city council has always been committed to the library and doing something for the library. It comes out every time they speak about, you know, the future of the city. So I'm, I think that we, this will create a really solid roadmap for us. I, I don't think that I have any, any questions, but I would like to take this particular opportunity and open up to see if any of our guests would like to comment on anything they've seen and anything that they'd like to, to add to this. And if you don't mind, if you would just introduce yourself and tell us, you know, your, your interest here. So is there anyone from the group that might speak? Now, I know all of you guys on this call and I've never known you to be so quiet.
That's because everything has been so efficiently put together.
Either that or you've got plans tonight and you're trying to get over to the city council to hear the meeting.
No, 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 no. That's, that's already been going along. Yeah. No, it's, I have to say, the presentation, I was not expecting the Friends Library and the foundation both to have come in with completed forms. And, and that really kind of jumpstarts the whole process. It fills in gaps for me as a new trustee. I suspect Mike for David as well, since he and I are the new trustees, David Norgard. So it was incredibly helpful putting this all together. So where I thought we were going to have to kind of have a discussion to tease some of this out, it was presented to us in a very coaching way. So, yeah, I'm, I'm very pleased.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, Al. I think that it's so good to hear all of us on the, the same page. Let me, let me, let me challenge. Is there anything that you think that maybe we've left off? Is there something that didn't make the list that we, we might want to at least keep out there in the universe? Because it's hard to narrow things down. We've been talking about for so many years to two things, right? Was there anything that didn't make the list for the Friends or the Foundation?
Let me ask, again, I, I'm a newbie on this, so excuse my ignorance in the question itself. And I'm not sure quite how to ask the question, but it has to do with technology, basically. And the ability, not necessarily, I guess I'm thinking of providing access. I'm, I'm thinking the way all of the K-12 and colleges and universities had to shut down and deliver instructions on, on, on the internet and in a way that they've never done before. But it pointed out the need, extensive need, quite frankly, for increased access to broadband. I don't know if the library has a role in this initiative right now in terms of connecting the library resources more effectively, not to suggest they aren't effective. I don't know. I, I'm talking out of ignorance, I admit. But it just, that's the only thing that hits me, something about having to do with the access and moving into the twenty-second century in terms of, of library science with, with broadband.
That's, that's
Incredibly naive question.
No, 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 not at all. Actually, and the librarian in me, you, is challenged. And here's where I go with that. Any of you can disagree or agree. You know, with what's going on right now in Washington, with this discussion of this infrastructure funding that could come our way, you know, the way of all of us over the next ten years. You know, there were years ago when library funding came from an idea like that, you know, and it filtered down to libraries and improved programs twenty years ago, twenty-five, thirty years ago. I think we have to keep our ears open and our eyes watching that discussion. And, you know, I'm sure the city's going to be standing there, ready if there's money for infrastructure. But technology is going to be so critical, right, as you, you pointed out. So I, I think that that's certainly something we all should be watching. I know Jeannie will be, but I mean, I think as organizations, you know, the, the project that the foundation did this past year with buying the hotspots. I mean, you know, that right there shows that
Right.
It can certainly align with some of the priorities of our support groups. And who knows? I mean, it could be that the trustees may feel like it's a critical part of infrastructure that falls within our funding and we want to push for the library as well, following into Jeannie might want to say. That's kind of, that was kind of my, when you asked that question, I thought maybe that's where you were going. But Jeannie, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes. So actually, that's, it's a great, it, it's, it's a hot topic right now, access. We, a lot of people were really surprised when the pandemic hit at, at the, the gap. And in the library world, I don't, I'm not, wasn't surprised because we've been talking about the digital divide for at least twenty years since I was in library school. And there is a gap and it keeps getting wider with people who have access and who don't. And the library is a big partner in that. So we have, with the foundation's help, that was wonderful. We got our hotspot grant. So we've got hotspots that we're checking out. They're, they're building in popularity. So that's great. We've also got a grant from the California State Library. We got twelve Chromebooks that we are going to start circulating pretty soon. So we, we know that there's a need for people to have access to devices that are bigger than a cellphone. And then we worked during the pandemic to expand our Wi-Fi access. We put a hot, we put an antenna outside so that you can get Wi-Fi in our parking lot. One of the nice things about the school district here in Palm Springs is that every student in Palm Springs has access to a Chromebook. They have access to a hotspot if they need it. So the school really, they worked on that for their students. So that's good.
What is, Jeannie, what is the awareness of, of that availability, I guess, is another question. I, again, I'm, I'm woefully out of touch.
Well, we, we do our best.
Yeah, and, and I should be aware so that I can provide information to others about the resources that are available.
Yeah, we do our best. We did add signage in the parking lot for the strong, where the strongest signal is. The Wi-Fi signal apparently goes all the way to the J.C. Frey Building, so it's a quite, quite strong antenna. So yes, that's something. Ed, you mentioned infrastructure. Now, this is something that it's not, it's not really, well, it's part of the priorities. So renovating the library and whatnot, the California State Library is opening up an infrastructure grant. And I plan to apply.
Absolutely.
And it's, it's for life safety improvements. And each library can apply for up to ten million dollars. And it requires a dollar-for-dollar match. So we would have to justify twenty million dollars in infrastructure life safety needs.
What does life safety needs mean?
That means things like sprinklers, probably earthquake retrofitting, things, fire alarms, possibly ADA access. We're working on, we've got to look at the list and see what it is, but it's safety.
Is that something that should go on our priority list so that the city council is aware of that grant? And the fact that we're applying and the fact that it would require a dollar-for-dollar match?
You don't have to put it on here because it's, it has to go before the council because the council has to apply technically. I mean, the city government has to apply, so we have to take it to council. So they're going to be aware. But part of the, don't worry, I make this, I will make them aware. We were all, we are all going to be aware of this. It's, it's not even, the application period hasn't actually officially opened yet. They're doing pre-applications right now and then they're going to open full applications in a couple of months. So we just had a webinar about it to learn about definitions and, and things, so.
That work, but wouldn't that help if that were on our priority list to ensure the support of city council, which I'm sure they might? They might balk at the dollar-for-dollar match. I mean, that's, that's a different question. But I'm just wondering if it gives any additional credibility to the strength of our commitment to communicate that to the city council, that it is a commitment of the board. Therefore, it's one of our, our priorities. Again, it's a question, I'm, I'm very naive on these things right now.
Well, you, you've got me thinking too, Al and Jeannie. I mean, our numbers, our number two priority for twenty-one, twenty-two is secure funding to create spaces in the current library facility to meet community needs. I'm wondering if we should expand that to, that in defined spaces as both physical and virtual. Might include what you're talking about because you're right. We don't know what lies ahead. We didn't know that we'd have to have an antenna on top of the building two years ago to provide Wi-Fi to people because they didn't have Wi-Fi. So should we, should we expand that to include virtual space as well as physical space?
I would. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Virtual space, what are you talking about? Like, what does that mean?
Wi-Fi programs like you, we did with the foundation, you know, do we need to be prepared to put money behind more hotspots or more lending of technology to our community with the, to the have-nots, you know, the digital divide? I mean, I don't want to get too caught up in digital divide. I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Should, or do we just all agree that when we talk about spaces, that it could very well look virtual as well as physical?
I would like to specify it frankly, I, I, because I think it gets overlooked. I, I think we think in the old mode. I'm making the transition, trying to think virtual all the time, but then my whole education, my whole career was in education and I was forced to. But for the general public, I don't think they're thinking quite that way. I think, I think it's important to specify both.
You only get two priorities. So which ones, what's more important?
No, I'm not, by the way, I'm not saying I have another priority. I'm saying that on number two, for example, secure funding to create both virtual and physical spaces on our form. You see number two there?
Oh, sure. That's so, yeah, don't get bogged down too much into the, the minutia, honestly, but.
Yeah, but it's not minutia. It, it, and I apologize for interrupting you, but it isn't minutia. It, it's really, really being more clear about what the priority is addressing. It's not just, I, I think we tend to think in terms, create spaces in the current library facility to meet community needs. To me, that sounds, that's a physical need. We create classrooms. But to add both physical and virtual space, you know, we can create virtual classrooms as well, which is what colleges and universities have been doing.
You're kind of cheating because it's, it's two separate issues, really.
Not really. It's, it's, we're, no, we're, we're, we're increasing the, the facilities to meet the community needs, but we're doing it in two ways, both physical and virtual. I don't see it as two separate priorities. I see it as one, but just defining it more clearly for the, for the city council and others who might need it. But that's, again, my own bias, so.
I hear what both of you are saying, but Jeannie, for example, if we got a message tomorrow that state funding is zeroed out for all the databases that we, we rely upon, state funding to pay for, we'd have to find that money. We rely upon those services so much. And that's a virtual world, right? I mean, that is a virtual service. So, you know.
The other thing is you don't have to stick to only doing two yourself. These are just things that you're submitting to city council for them to consider, for them to fund and them to consider as a city priority. So just because the, just because you're, I, I agree with you. This is a great priority. Something for us to do no matter what. You buy books, you support whatever. We support millions of different ideas. So, so this is just something that we're, we submitted to city council to give them suggestions on what they want to make the priorities and, and physical spaces is something that city council should be funding. You all can support virtual spaces. I think the foundation, I think when you, we talk about aligning priorities and having clear definitions of which group does what. We talked about the Friends doing the day-to-day services and programs and, and the things that they've been doing. And the foundation really needs a, they need something to get behind. And I feel like this tech, I feel like technology is a great thing for the foundation to get behind, with the hotspots. They could help support more hotspots or, or more Chromebooks or, or a combination kit where someone would get both, you know. We could, we could expand that program. And I feel like then you could say, you know, the foundation's goal is to, to focus on big building, big, big ideas and also improving the technology of our community or improving the technology at the library or something like that, you know. Because then you have definitions where you can, people say, well, what's the, what do the Friends do? Well, the Friends support programming, the Koi Pond, summer reading, Born to Read, Career Online High School, you know, on and on. And the, the foundation, they need some things to do too, as far as to say, this is our thing that, that we're known for. A big fun, big building is, you know, it, it's a great thing. So that's plenty, but.
So I'm not, I, we can move on. I, I hear what you're saying. I, I think though that this is something that we in the future should expand upon and be aware of community needs. I think it's touched on in a lot of different places, Al. It's implied, but, you know, it, it can very well rear its ugly head again and where we, it really is out there. We need more technology.
Well, I think so. And, and, and I agree, Ed, it is implied, but not everybody can infer the same thing from an implication. I much prefer, that was my, what I did over the forty-five years in higher ed. I'm very specific when it comes to things with, when I, what dealt with the legislature, Congress or Chair of the Congressional Advisory Committee. You know, I, I would, I hate to say it this way, I dumbed everything down to an eighth grade level, which is exactly what the federal government does with every reading material that they come out with. And I did that for the congressional members and legislators and city council members and the rest. I mean, you have to make it as simple as possible so that there's no misunderstanding of what you mean. I probably should not have said that and I hope maybe the recording isn't working as a matter of fact.
That's okay. Dr. Borba or trustee Norgard, any, any comments or reaction to the conversation? Or do you feel strongly about it? Do you think we're okay?
I think we're going in the right direction. I like that all three organizations' priorities are aligned. It won't need much work and be great if we can all work together as a nice team, get these things done.
Trustee Norgard, anything?
Yeah, so it, it seems clear to me that we're all interested in the short-term goal of the J.C. Frey, or is it Frye Building? Putting that together.
I say Frye. I think it's all
This one is Frye.
Right, okay. It seems like we're all interested. We're all on the same page about that as a short-term goal. And it seems quite clear to me as a newcomer that everyone's on board with a major renovation or new construction of a library in, as the long-term goal. All of that seems clear to me. I don't see any sort of confusion or conflict about those two goals, short-term and long-term. My understanding is incorrect. I, I'd sure want to be corrected tonight.
So, thank you. So Jeannie, I, well, before you, Jeannie, Nancy, David, I want to give you an opportunity. After all this conversation, is there anything you might want to add or anything that you, that you heard there that you want to share or talk about? David?
I'm okay. I, I, I just, I think, I just like to say that I think this has been a very positive meeting. And I think for, for everybody to kind of hear what the organization's goals are and to, to, to see that we're all aligned, it's very exciting.
Well, I mean, I, I see the day is going to come where we're all going to be asked to stand in front of city council and, and tell this what the library needs, right? It's so nice to all have us be on the same page and say, this is clearly the priorities of our community. And we have to remind people at city council, we are the community. We're all volunteers. We're all part of this community and we're passionate about the library. And every chance you get and you see one of those city council members, you know, talk it up. I do. I can tell you, I, I consider idle sometimes, but I always make the library and what we need. So Jeannie, logistically, since this is a, a public meeting where we've discussed these documents and you now have the documents from the Friends and the Foundation, are we required to open these up for those who aren't here? For any public comment or? Are we required to open these up for those who aren't here for any public comment or do you have what you need to move to the next steps?
Um, I have what I need. Um, we, the, basically the city council wanted to see the library board and the library department, but. This was just an, um, an exercise for the organizations all to kind of come together and, and I think it's a great, it was a great tool. So we, um. Took advantage of that. The, the council, um. Didn't ask for our nonprofits to submit anything, but, uh, I'll be happy to share it with them anyway. Because I, I think it's nice to show that there is support. I think this is a, this is a great, great thing. Always when we get to come together, it's a great thing, um, for all the groups to, to see each other.
Can I just say one thing too? I, I, I do think that these documents. And the, the, the fact that this meeting happened will give you and us a lot of leverage with the city. And with the Measure J people to say, look, you know, we're all on the same page. So let's get the show on the road. Right?
Right. Well, um, the trustees are now, they, we've shared all these documents with the trustees. Nancy, David, I hope that you'll share with your organizations. The, the full set of documents and, and where we're all heading. I think.
I'll send everything out to everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because I think that's a great, uh, great tool too. And we have our regular board meeting next Wednesday night at 5:30. So, um. If, we always have public comment and if there's anything that you wanted to.
So if, if it pleases the board of trustees, why don't we sleep on this, think about it, and at the meeting coming up next week. Um, officially accept, you know, the set of documents, um, or endorse them, or whatever the term might be for Jeannie that she can then take to city council. Uh, Nancy, of course, you and David are always on the agenda. So you're, I hope that you can be there, but. By the virtue that you've submitted these and we've reviewed them, we'll, we'll send it, you're, you're okay with it, but we'll. As a public meeting, we can say that we've gone through this process. And that we all in agreement that this is the direction we want to go and the priorities. And then you have what you need, right? Jeannie, is that okay?
Yeah, David Norgard has a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Norgard, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, we, we've talked quite a bit tonight about the long-term goal of a new library complex. However, that might look renovated or new construction, as I said before. Um, I'm a newcomer here. I, I'm curious to know if there has been preliminary work on a case statement for such endeavor. Perhaps by the foundation, perhaps by the trustees or, or, uh, Jeannie, uh, your office. I, as I walk around the library itself, I can understand the need for a new library. As I was taken on tour by Jeannie, she pointed out things that, uh, need addressing. So it's not in any way that I'm doubting the need, but we've just been talking about for an hour or so. Uh, but I'm, I'm, I know that in my work in fundraising, you begin with a case statement, and I wonder if there has been. Some preliminary work done on that front.
All together now? Yes.
And, and trustee Norgard, I'm, I'm happy for, to sit down with you and kind of talk through some of the things that the community groups have done. But you, you're, in a way, you're in a good spot because you're picking up where we left off. Pre-COVID, we were ready. And, and those decisions that were to be made that day would trigger what you're asking for. That was all part of the plan. Is that the next step was everyone agreed that we've got to go in this direction. Now let's, let's secure the funding, get all the parties to agree this is the direction. And then that was the next logical step is how do you justify it? And the city process begins, you know, we, we have a city process, we have to follow, all of us are going to give money. Uh, but you were, you were right on in, uh, knowing where we are. So welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
And we're not laughing at you.
No, we're not.
We're just going to laugh along altogether.
I love those questions. It's.
They've been doing, it's, it's, it started and then, uh, it started even as early as like the early eighties. I mean, they, they've been. They, they had budget shortfalls when they built this building in 1975. They had to cut back lighting. They had to add lighting. They've had issues. They wanted to expand. They've done plans. Uh, I started nine years ago, they, we, 2013, we did some plans and then, uh, just recently we, we started and then, uh, yeah. We've, yeah, we've got some plans.
Probably.
In case statements.
The biggest decision we made in the last 18 months, and I, I'm sorry, you guys, my calendar, my brain is just so voided of all the time we were away. So forgive me. But we spent, um, a lot of time in our community looking at where do we want the library to be? For example, I chaired that committee. Um, and that was a major decision that is driving us now, right? We, we all know that, that our, our community wants the library to stay in the same location. So with that, we, that was the next step is to build the case for what do we do with that space? So, yeah. You know, thank you for that. All right. Thank you all of you, um, for your participation and your work into this. I really appreciate it. And I know that the citizens of Palm Springs appreciate it. Um, and I know there's lots of other topics going on right now that, uh, our city's dealing with, but I think this is one that's so, so long-term and so great for us to, to tackle. And all agree that in the same priority. So, um, I've said this to many people. I've lived in a lot of communities. I've raised a lot of money for libraries. I've been involved in it all of my career. But this is one town where everybody puts their money where their mouth is. So it's, it, I think this is going to be a process. Uh, when we finally get started, it's, it's going to be so successful with all the people that are committed. This group alone is so committed to this facility and to the library. With that, Jeannie, is there anything you'd like to say before we close the meeting?
I want to thank you for your support. Thank you for, uh, wonderful input and being thoughtful about. Your groups and your library, you know, the library and, um. Like Ed said, the next meeting is October 6th at 5:30. Same, um, same Zoom login, uh, everything and have a great night. I'm just so happy.
Thank you. So I'd like to close the special meeting of the Palm Springs Public Library Board of Trustees, uh, in conjunction with the Friends and the Foundation representatives. Uh, the time is 6:51 and again, thank all of you and hope to see you next week at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay safe.